All right, it's seven to one. On the December tenth, two thousand and eighteen, I'll call the meeting to order. And the first thing we'll do is stand for a moment outside the conference. This is in the Declaration of表明 interest for the minority there are. So, none. We'll move into the minutes of our previous meeting, which was on November nineteenth, twenty eighteen, as well as. Oh. Thank you, Jennifer. We actually have a motion to add a few items onto our agenda. So as a result, the council approved the additional addition of correspondence recommended reading C C fifteen from the clerk regarding the Roman Board of Directors' zone representative nominations for twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three, as well as staff report from the C O. Treasurer, item number ten, from the C O. Treasurer regarding council remuneration, and staff report C I O. T R eleven from the C O. Treasurer regarding the supplemental list of accounts payable from December seventh to December tenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Senator.
Councilor McKenney, it is presented by Deputy Mayor Hendricks. All those in favor? Close, and that's carried. Okay, clear. Thank you very much, Jennifer. And then we'll move into the minutes of our previous meeting, which was November nineteenth, twenty eighteen, regular meeting, as well as the minutes from the December third, twenty eighteen, inaugural meeting. And that's for approval. And just for clarification, even our new members of the council can vote on this on November nineteenth meeting, if you feel comfortable. If you don't, that's understandable. But you can vote on it as members of the council. Number and seconded for those? Deputy Mayor Hendricks. And Councilor McKenney? All those in favor?
I'm staying. I don't know if you can.
No. Just said no votes.
There's no vote.
Yeah. And that's carried. And we are right on time for our first delegation, and that's Mariah Minn, and it's an update on who can advance. Come forward.
Thank you, Dan.
So just for some clarification to our council members and council members around. Mariah came to council of presentation and asked if we could give her some support going off into representing Canada, and we provided that support. We asked her if she could come back and give an update of how everything went.
I have some pictures if you guys want.
Sure.
Excellent.
To kind of read my little thing on the page.
Yep.
Um, what an incredible experience I had this past September presenting Canada in National Dance Championships in Prague. I'd like to take a brief minute and share my experiences with you. Our junior show business team arrived in the beautiful city of Prague on Monday, September twenty-fourth, early in the morning after an exciting overnight flight from Toronto. After arriving at our hotel around noon, being at the jet lag, we were able to take the remainder of the day to gather our bearings and familiarize ourselves with the city that we are home to the next eight days. Tuesday morning, we woke to a glorious but chilly day and took advantage of our only free day to sightsee the old city of Prague. As a team of dancers and parents, we walked around through the old cobblestone streets in our bright red Canadian jackets. It was quite an experience to go yet stopped by random strangers inquiring who we were and what we were here to do. Many wished us good luck and soon realized how respected US Canadians in the foreign country. We were able to see the arrival of the national co-op, which had been under renovation for many decades. We ate at the scene in an authentic Czech pub before heading to the famous Prague Castle to nap for a day. On Wednesday, we woke up early to catch the bus and headed to the International Dance Organization's competition to cheer on the children's show business team as well as the six children's soloists. By the end of the day, after having walked and toured all over the world, we were excited to find out that our three male soloists and the children's formation would be continuing to the semifinals the next day. On Thursday, it was another early morning and a quick breakfast in order to get to the main party. At this point, we were getting familiar with the style of the competition, and we were very grateful for the dancers speaking English almost the entire time. We cheered, we cheered on our fellow Canadian dancers and watched as the children's formation took silver as well as one of the male soloists. Another, the other male soloist placed sixth. It was a great day for Canada. We took part in some non-competitive fun and at the Parade of Nations, which is a gathering of every dancer present by their country and crowded around the dance floor. It was a great way to be recognized and also visit and interact with dancers from all over the world. Friday was finally our day to dance. We rose very early to get ourselves into full hair, makeup, and costume. We had a dry rub, which is a two-minute practice of floor time without music to check our stations, spacing, formations, and practice our lifts. It was the first time for me to take the stage and look into the pattern, see all the different flags, jackets, and faces of the many different nations. Nerves were beginning to set in. Our drive grew much smoothly, and we were ready for the quarterfinal round. We were competing against the best dancers in twenty-six different countries. To say that our first time at one of the dance halls was a blur is an understatement. The sound of Canadians cheering for us in the stands was definitely exhilarating and a moment I will never forget. We advanced into semifinals, which would happen the next day, and we couldn't have been happier to know that we had the in-house fourteen other countries to be in the top twelve. Also moving on to the semifinals was my fellow teammates, our junior male and female soloists. Saturday, much, started perhaps the same as Friday morning, with hair, makeup, and costume. Ready to take the stage for the second time, the nerves had settled considerably from the day before, and we're all able to enjoy this performance much more. After almost a flawless performance, we were devastated to find out that we were not being advanced into the finals. Our national director did have some encouraging news to share with us, though. The fact that we had tied for sixth place with the Russian Federation team. However, due to a single-point difference between the two routines in the quarterfinal round, the Russian Federation was put through to the finals rather than us. Our journey as a team was finished for the World Dance Competitions. We officially placed seventh in the world, beating nineteen other countries, something I'm very proud of. Our day, however, was not over. We still had our junior soloist to dance in the semifinal round. Both dancers made it to the final top six. I'm very proud to share that my fellow teammate Caitlin placed sixth in the female junior solo category, and my teammate Aiden placed first and took home the gold in the male junior solo category. That's why Aiden won the title of junior male world champion. It was incredible to be there and share in his victory and to be present with him with the for the rising Canadian flag and to stand at attention while our national anthem played through at the stadium. Sunday wrapped up with our one and only adult dancer Isaac Lupien, who advanced all the way to the finals and ended up finishing second in the world and took the silver. We took advantage of the last few hours of our day to walk back to the old city and purchase some souvenirs and enjoy some international cuisine before my early flight. Monday morning, after an amazing life-changing experience in Prague, our team of twelve dancers, fifteen children dancers, and one adult dancer along with parents, grandparents, siblings, trainers, and choreographers boarded our plane to come home. Just before leaving, our pilot on the plane's speaker and announced that to the entire flight that it had been his honor to have flown the national Canadian dance team and congratulated us on our job well done. Looking back on our pilot's statement that day, I can't help but notice how accurately it sums up my own feelings. This experience has been an honor in every sense of the word. I am honored to have been chosen to represent Canada out of the hundreds of dancers who auditioned. I am honored to have the support of my family, friends, and fellow dancers, and I am honored to have the support and encouragement from you, the, through every kind of word, gesture, statement, and of course, by every dollar raised or donated. It is because of you that this dream became a reality, and I can never thank you enough. Looking ahead, I am back at my dance studio in Jaffray, training hard to prepare for another season of dance competitions. I am awaiting the news on the upcoming audition date for Team Canada as they prepare to take teams to South Africa for the Commonwealth Cup in the summer of twenty nineteen. Um, my passion for dance is at its all-time high, and I know that the sky's the limit, and I will carry this experience with me forever and continue to build on the foundation that has been laid. Thank you for including me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for the update. Any council member want to?
I was just gonna tell her if you need somebody to fill in for you. I think I could do that routine a lot.
Both are hot.
Looking at those photos, very impressive what you did with the rest of the team, so congratulations. Thank you so much for providing us with an update.
I have this. It's just in the little thing.
Okay.
Um, I do have actually one question. So, Mr. Sanders is not here, or Mr. Stockman? Is there any way to either get like an address or drop something off here? Because we'd also like to update them as well. They believe they're the other two that were here prior that aren't here now.
Would you mind, like, if you could cut a, have a copy of what he just said, we can copy it and then, oh, excellent.
One in that bigger envelope.
Yeah, we'll make sure it's affordable.
Is that possible or like up in the address or something or?
That's okay. We can make sure it gets optimum.
Yes, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Take care.
Congratulations again.
All right, so we're gonna jump right into our plan and court for our committee of adjustment for seven fifteen. So we need a motion to resolve that the committee convene as the committee of adjustment for the purpose of hearing minor variance application A. A. O. four, two thousand and eighteen, at seven fifteen P. M. Councilor Carr, Clark, and Deputy Mayor Hendricks. All those in favor? Close and that's carried. So the purpose of the following public hearing for the Alley Metcalf Committee of Adjustment is to give the members of the committee of adjustment, as well as the general public, an opportunity to hear all interested persons with respect to the application before the committee this evening. The public advise that comments expressed in written material presented are a matter of public record available for full disclosure. When a person or public body files an appeal of a decision made this evening to the local planning appeal tribunal without having made a written submission to the committee, the tribunal may dismiss the appeal. If you wish to be notified of the decision, please submit a written request to the township. A sign sheet has been provided for your convenience. And our planner, Erin, is off today, so we have Kathy's gonna go through the report.
Jennifer's doing it.
Jennifer first.
I'm doing the other report. She's doing the minor variance, and I'm doing the other report. Thanks.
Hey, you're doing that one. We're doing that one. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. So this is in regards to application for minor variance A. O. four, two thousand and eighteen, fourteen hoofed niggles present. Applicant's name is Eden Judy Brower. They're not in attendance tonight while we go through the planning report. The purpose of the application is to seek relief from the Township of Alley Metcalf's comprehensive zoning bylaw number thirty-four, two thousand and seven, as it relates to the maximum height requirement for an accessory building. Specifically, the applicant is requesting permission for the construction of an accessory building with a maximum height of seven point nine meters or twenty-six feet from grade to peak, whereas the maximum building height for an accessory building is five meters or sixteen point four feet according to our zoning bylaw. Um, in the analysis, section forty-five of the Planning Act, there's, in order for a municipality to approve a minor variance, there's four tests that need to be, excuse me, put through. Um, the first test is, is the variance considered minor in nature? Although the proposed accessory building would exceed the height requirements by two point nine meters or nine point six feet, it would be comparable to existing accessory buildings located in the area, and the proposed accessory building will not exceed the height of the existing dwelling, which is twenty-seven feet, thus ensuring it remains visually secondary to the primary structure. And all the impact of this variance can be considered minor in nature. The second test, is the variance desirable for the appropriate use of the land? The surrounding land uses are predominantly residential. Several neighboring properties have large accessory buildings. The proposed building would not be out of character with the area and is therefore an appropriate use of the land. Test number three, does the variance maintain the general intent and purpose of the official plan? The subject lands are designated as a residential area where the primary uses of land shall be residential as well as uses for accessory thereto. The proposed variance would maintain the existing residential use of the land. Planning staff is satisfied that the intent of the official plan would be maintained. And test number four, does the variance maintain the general intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw? The intent of restricting the height of accessory buildings is to ensure that accessory buildings remain subordinate to the main use of the property being residential. It is the opinion of planning staff that the size and usability of the proposed accessory building would not be unreasonable for a large residential lot as a result of the increase in building height. Planning staff is satisfied that the application meets all four tests of the Planning Act required in order to grant a minor variance. Uh, with consultation process, township's chief building official requested that the proposed building be located far enough from the lot line so that final grading slopes away from the building without adversely affecting the neighboring properties, and that eaves troughs be installed on the accessory structure to direct water away from the lot lines to the satisfaction of the township. Safety Region Conservation Authority indicated no concerns with the minor variance application, and at this, the time of writing of the report, there's been no comments or concerns received from the public regarding the proposal. So the recommendation is that the application for minor variance A. O. four, two thousand and eighteen, filed by Eden Judy Brower, for relief from section five point one point three of the zoning bylaw to permit the construction of accessory building with a maximum height of seven point nine meters or twenty-six feet from grade to peak be granted, subject to the following condition: that the subject accessory building, including eaves troughs along the lengths of the building's fascia and the related downsboat, be directed away from any neighboring property to the satisfaction of the chief's building official.
Thank you, Jennifer. Is there anyone in the gallery wishing to speak through the application? Same then. So any questions or comments from the committee of adjustments?
My only concern would be that the integrity of the building is for residential. Do we know what these people do for a living? Are they retired? Or we let out?
They want to store motorhomes or something.
Yeah, as long as we know that's the intent.
Just think for what you're asking, just to make sure it doesn't turn into a business or something.
Exactly, yeah.
We don't know. Um, it's not a question that we ask when an application is forwarded. Um, the application is based on for housing and motorhomes, so.
And they're aware of that.
Yes.
And I did note on the, on the drawing, like the satellite picture, that motorhome almost exactly, that they've got parked there almost exactly. They wouldn't have room to do much else there, so.
There's another question. Yep, Councilor McKenney?
I was just gonna move the motion to accept it conditional.
Okay, and a seconded, Councilor Brody? All those in favor? Close, and that's carried. Just a motion to resolve that the committee of adjustment be closed at seven twenty P. M. and council reconvene in regular session. Councilor Clark? Clark? I can't throw that out there. It's harder than other ones I've been saying the last four years. Councilor Clark, it's the C C, I think. That's what the problem is. Me by Councilor Clark and seconded by Deputy Mayor Hendricks. All those in favor? Close, and that's carried. Not too soon for the next report unless, hey, you want to just jump into it or?
If I may, it may be better to wait and do that report when I do my C I O. Report. If council wants to adjust the agenda, since I'll be doing both reports, we might as well do both at the same time.
Yeah, that sounds good. Okay, so the next section there is our correspondence. The first. Yep.
Did we pass both minutes or just the one?
We did, both, at the very beginning.
I wasn't paying attention to that for.
The November nineteenth and also the December third. Okay, so correspondence, the first section is upcoming conferences, seminars, and meetings. Uh, the first section there, which is our regular meetings, which will most likely be changed by the end of this meeting, which is January seventh, twenty nineteen, January twenty-first, twenty nineteen, and then February fourth, twenty nineteen. And then in the County Middlesex, it's the inaugural meeting and dinner, which is being held this Thursday. And then the first item of correspondence is from Roma, and it's the two thousand and nineteen annual conference registration information. I think there are a few members that are attending. I think. Okay, and then the next one is from Good Roads, Ontario Good Roads, and that's the two thousand and nineteen conference registration form. I assume Jeff will be attending that. The next section is the recommended readings. Item number three is from Blue Water Recycling Association. It's the November two thousand and eighteen highlights. Item number four is from the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing. It's a message from Minister Steve Clark, as well as the second one, item number five. Item number six is from A M O. It's a policy update regarding fire news. Item number seven, also from A M O. It's a policy update. Government announces new social assistance reform plan. Item number eight is a policy update. Ontario government releases new environmental plan for consultation. Policy update regarding the provincial government releases fall economic statements. Item number ten is from Four Counties Health Services, and it's the Fall two thousand and eighteen newsletter. What?
Did you look at the picture? Mine is about five foot. I wondered if I was standing in a hole.
No, it's okay. I thought I did something wrong. Item number eleven is from Ontario Good Roads Association. It's the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand twenty board directors. Item number twelve is from the County of Plampton, and it's the Bear Creek Bridge Class Environmental Assessment. And I think that's just so we have noticed of that happening.
Yeah, because it's a long ways from our township. I wasn't sure how it affected us, except that it might get some traffic detours, but it's a long ways from our border.
And then the next section there, which is the action required, and the first one is item number thirteen, ten of Kearney. It's a resolution regarding the voters' list in Ontario. Councilor McKenney?
I'm on the fence on this one because there always are problems, but some of the problems are caused because people that have passed away are still on the voters' list, and that's because the estate may or may not have been dealt with in a timely manner. And I don't see this working to really resolve in a whole lot. But I'm thinking if they could, it would be a wonderful thing. So I'm either way.
I'm, I was in support of it. I find the, the voters' list is so horribly out of date, and it requires so much action for, you know, people that have moved out and, you know, they get their names changed when they get married, and they're still on the voters' list until somebody actually comes into the office and gets them off. And I, I don't know if there's a better way to go about doing that without invading people's privacy, but there has to be some. And this, this year, we had, it took a really long time to get the voters' list. So I, I think anything that can be done to improve that whole process would be a good thing.
Councilor Clark, do you have something?
Uh, I was just gonna say with the M P A C listing, that they shouldn't have, like, had access to that. And there's people that have owned property for thirty years and weren't on the voters' list, so I'd be in support of anything to improve that. Because they're, they're not asking us to, for any money. It's just as supportive of principles, so I've got no problem moving that.
So I move the resolution then to support that correspondence then. Seconded by Councilor Hendricks, or Deputy Mayor Hendricks. Any further discussion? I just wondered if Jennifer wanted to add something in there, because you were the one that was dealing with the list.
Um, I will have a report for council, but that won't be till January's meeting once us clerks meet on Friday. One of the topics for discussion will be the voters' list. Because of the Canada Post rotating strikes that caused havoc with getting our preliminary list of electors, you should have had it the beginning of September, but because of the upload to our new list management voter view, which is also data fix, there was some delay with the contractor with getting that information from M P A C. But once it was, once it was uploaded into voter view, I found it to be not very accurate. Our, actually, our tax system, I found more accurate than what the voters' list was. And a lot of the changes that I had to do, I used our tax system to help out with that. And as well as Kathy's knowledge with doing ownership changes, she knows who's coming and who's going better than what that list does, so.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Yes.
Okay, is there a little more discussion? So all those in favor? Close, and that's carried. The next one, which is correspondence, item number fourteen, and it's from Blue Water Recycling Association. It's the annual Christmas tree chipping program. Do you want to move that then? Okay. Do you want a second for that? Councilor Brody, any discussion on that?
So we would have to designate a depot area because that's how they pick up from a central depot. And is there a minimum criteria for, they'll come out for one tree, or is there a minimum standard?
It's easy to set up a depot. You more or less just have to barricade off a square. The biggest thing is to get the information to, to the people, to the public, and they'll come and show up and check whether it's three trees or fifty trees. The biggest problem I've seen with them is the snow collection before they get there. And if you don't open the snow, get the snow out of them, they'll miss some of the trees, and then it's your job, they don't come back again to clean up anything if they can. It's to set a depot up, sign each, that sort of thing, very easy, very easy to do, so.
So who do we task that with to figure out where the depot's going to be? Because he's never been done in a. No, no, never been done. So I'm just wondering who, who's, that would be that?
Sorry. We do, at Landfills, do accept clean wood, so that there is the ability to take Christmas trees to the landfills. That is, I think, an option that probably in the past has been an option, so.
But I think if we're going for the chipping program, I, my, my thoughts would be probably here or somewhere where there's staff on site all the time instead of just having them sent to the landfill.
Do you think there would be an option? Is there a way to do this?
I don't know.
It is better than just having them dumped on my farm. Yeah. Be afraid of the air to down.
Yes, probably it still happened.
Exactly. We, we just never had it before, so I didn't know what the need would be.
But by the time you let people home, it was almost too late this year.
Well, I think you can put it on the township page, and we have our usual media stuff, and it's, it's actually, there's all kinds of things that are coming up on our Facebook page every week. So would we propose that it be here then, if we're gonna go ahead and do this? I would, I would let the. There was no cost to us to do it.
Yeah, you want a space where people can get in and get out. You got to have a space big enough for, to support the area. Easily could be done up here in a cordoned off area, just to try it for a year to see what, what shows up. One of the biggest things we'll do is like get the information out and get some signs so that people know exactly arrow pointing, this is where you put the trees. But yeah, there's lots of it here to do, so.
Are we willing to add that in the motion? Have you moved it, Senator?
I can certainly put that in there, and that location be at the Public Works yard in Alley. Alley Public Yard, Alley Garage.
Be interesting to see what the.
How they show up.
I'll, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'll follow up then after Christmas so you know whether it's, uh... I'll, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'll follow up then after Christmas, so you know whether it's, uh, some kind of program shows up, and then we can, you know, maybe expand the signage, that sort of thing for next year.
Yep.
If we get one tree, we'll, we'll see what happens.
Yeah, as long as it doesn't take a lot of time for the roads people to, like, set it up.
Okay, Jennifer, you want to say that aloud?
I do, so moved by Council McKinnon, seconded by Council Brody. Uh, council approved the township's participation in the annual Christmas tree chipping program provided by Blue Water Recycling Association, and that the drop-off depot be at Adelaide Public Works Garage.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Pose, and that's carried. And our last item of correspondence, which was the, uh, yes, I put it down there, it's on my donors. Uh, the correspondence item number fifteen, which is the Roma Board of Directors Zone Representative nominations for twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three. Alright, so we need a motion to resolve the council receiving filed correspondence items CC one to CC twelve and fifteen. Council Clark? Council McKinnon? All those in favor? Pose, and that's carried. So we'll move into our staff reports, and our first one is from our fellow works manager, Jeff Bill.
Good evening, um, I have two reports to read, uh, the first one is basically an update on a bylaw we have. But it leads into the second report, uh, and we talked about the second report, um, having it come forward just so everybody knows what the winter maintenance program is that is up on here. So starting with the first report, the first report is, uh, is minimum maintenance standard by law number nineteen dash two zero one zero. We want to do a little bit of reading with these two reports, just because I want to make sure I touch on, on everything, so, um, the municipality sets a level of service, um, and this municipality has decided to, um, to set that level of service based on the minimum maintenance standards set by the Ontario Regulation two three nine. The minimum maintenance standards that, or the Regulation two three nine, the minimum maintenance standards are designed to allow municipalities across Ontario to set their level of service levels, um, based on, um, uh, traffic counts, speeds, um, throughout the province, um, so that there's a, there's a uniform level of service. And from what I've seen, um, pretty much the majority of all municipalities across the province have adopted minimum maintenance standard. So this, this report basically, um, in two thousand eighteen, there was, um, some amendments, um, to the minimum maintenance standards, mainly to do with sidewalks, um, but there was a few, um, changes to it, so I wanted to bring the new amendments up to, to, to the bylaw, and, um, and with this report. It leads into the winter maintenance program, which is in the second, um, report, but I also want to point out that minimum, minimum maintenance standard sets year-round guidelines for maintaining all roads, bridges, sidewalks, and signage. So it's a year-round, uh, bylaw, so it talks about everything from potholes to patrolling, um, to edge of pavement drop-offs, but it really gets into winter maintenance, um, and how much ice and snow can be on roadway or sidewalk before you have to do your maintenance program, so, um, that's really what the minimum maintenance standards talks about. As municipality, we can go higher than the standards, um, we generally don't want to go lower than the standards, cause you really open the door for lawsuits. You can easily go higher, but at the same time, once you do go beyond the minimum standards, you have to maintain that standard. You can't all of a sudden say, oh, I'm not gonna do that anymore, um, you can't go backwards once you've gone above the standard, so. And again, this municipality has, has adopted this, uh, years ago, uh, when the standards first came out. Um, and this report is just to update the initial bylaw with the amendments that were put in place in two thousand and eighteen. So my recommendation is that, um, that council resolve to direct the clerk to update, um, the bylaw.
Okay. Any questions or comments at all? So the recommendation there. Council McKinnon, seconded by uh, Jeff Henry Hendricks. All those in favor? Pose, and that's carried.
If, um, if Mr. Mayor grew up, the minimum maintenance standards, if anybody wants a copy of them, uh, we'll print them off, uh, here at the office, and make sure you have a copy, it, uh, it's a regulation, it, it's, I find it interesting, because it's my business, I didn't print them off just because, uh, you know, it is my business to make sure they're met, so. Uh, but at the same time, if anybody wants a copy, we can, we can make sure we get, get a copy of that regulation, so.
And those are also available online for, for.
Exactly, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
If you are useful, what if it's our work discussion, if you'd like, I can email a copy to you.
Yeah.
Anybody else want a copy?
So anyways, that, that kind of opens the door for my second report, which like I said before, uh, we've talked about this before, uh, bringing forward, uh, a report on our winter maintenance program. And since we started the winter and, and a new council term, I thought it'd be a really good idea to, uh, bring forward one of the first reports, uh, the winter maintenance program, so. I'm going to do a little bit of reading here, I'm gonna get up and, uh, I'll, once we get going, and give you a little, uh, a map behind me to show exactly where our locations are and what we're doing, but I'll get started with a little bit of, uh, the background. So as I explained in the first report, Adelaide Metcalf adopted the minimum maintenance standards as their level of service. So to meet the level of service, we develop a winter maintenance program to meet the level of service. So the program begins, the winter program begins on November fifteenth and ends April fifteenth of the following calendar year. This does not mean that if snow comes before or after these dates that we do not clear the roads, it just means that, uh, the, um, all the extra items that go into your winter maintenance program have to be in place by those dates, and then you're allowed to release the trucks, the equipment, the patrols after April fifteenth. So I, with the municipality, still has to do some patrolling, um, before November fifteenth. Um, but really, we have to have our full winter program in place by November fifteenth, and we're allowed to release that program after April fifteenth. So that's why those two dates are, are in there. And those are pretty common with southwestern Ontario, you'll find the, the county is along those lines in pretty much uh, most municipalities in southern Ontario, southwestern Ontario follow those, uh, dates. So, uh, winter weather and road conditions are monitored every day, multiple times if needed during the term of the winter program. So there'll always be a patrol, there'll always be weather monitoring, it's three times a day during the winter program. I can do it at home, it's not something that has to, someone has to come in here and, and monitor the weather. I record the weather, I, I download it off the internet, and, um, and, and document that I've checked the weather, so it's that simple. But the patrol, there's usually a patrol done every day unless the temperature goes above zero, and that, uh, is recorded, and the patrol is recorded and, and kept in place. If it's a snowy day, there's more patrols, the patrol may happen three times a day, um, early morning, uh, middle of the day, and later in the afternoon. Again, that's a little bit weather dependent, you know, if it's, uh, above zero, or if it's, you know, a, a day where there is no snow, or nothing going on in the roads, you may only do that twice a day, um, and that sort of thing, so. The municipality is, the municipality has two hundred sixteen kilometers of roads to maintain. All the roads are plowed, when there's a depth of snow, eight centimeters or greater, so for people, uh, three inches, uh, anything under three inches, uh, you, we can, we can, we don't have to plow. Uh, anything over three inches, uh, were required by minimum maintenance standards to plow the roads. There's a hundred and five kilometers of hardtop, which require an application of sand or salt, or sand and salt, we use a combination, um, of, of it, if we don't put straight salt, if we don't put straight sand on, it's a combination, generally it's, uh, uh, three to one, so, um, basically like a sixty-six percent sand versus a thirty-three percent, uh, salt ratios, generally the, the ratios it needs change a little bit depending on, again, the road conditions. The municipality is divided in four areas, I'll get up and I'll just let everybody know, so there's, there's four areas in the municipality for winter maintenance, and it's easi-, it's easily divided from north to south. Uh, area one is Egremont to the north, area two is basically Catesville to Egremont. Um, the third area is basically, um, uh, Melwood to Catesville. And then obviously the fourth area is Melwood below, or Winter and below, it, because of the river in there, it's, and it, it kind of swoops up a little bit. But you can kind of get the general direction, there's, there's four areas from north to south. The weather can vary considerably from the north to the south, um, and we saw that last year with the, um, snowfalls. Uh, this area up in, in the, in the north area, uh, we were working around the clock to try to keep the roads open, whereas down here, the sun was shining. It was not, uh, that much of a difference. Sit back down, I'll get back up again, but I just wanted to follow the report. So each area, um, has similar amounts of gravel kilometers, similar amount of hard surface kilometers, and that's very close. So, um, you can tell by the kilometers above that each truck will have roughly twenty-five kilometers of hardtops. Um, and I guess it, it, it works out evenly. So each area, or each route, if you want to call it that, uh, right now has a priority road. And, uh, um, each, if you look at, uh, the areas, so area one, the priority road is Wood up in this corner, and Cuddy. Up here, uh, priority road in area two is Pike and Mulberry, and that's area right here. Uh, priority, um, road in section three is Catesville, particularly from Kerwood going into, uh, Melbourne. And right now, in area four down here, Winter would be the priority road. Talk to, I think, that over the next couple of years could change to Scotchmere or Walkers, when, um, we get more hard surface down here, I think there'll be a a little more traffic down here, but right now, Winter. A little explanation on the priority, and we did a traffic count, um, and priority roads are set basically by traffic count. If you look at our traffic count in our, and again, um, traffic counts are available, uh, for anybody who, we can give you a copy of them, so you get more information if you would like some, um, but traffic count, um, going back to minimum maintenance standard, set your category of road. In this municipality, we have two roads that fall under category three, which the categories go one, two, one to six. One is your highest, six is your lowest. Um, so in this municipality, we have two roads that qualify as a number three, and that is Pike Road, both blocks, and the block leading out of, um, Second Street on Mulberry, this little area here, uh, fifteen hundred, eighteen hundred cars a day travel on that, those have over there in there. You go past that, the next busiest road in the municipality would be Wood, uh, running about five hundred cars a day. Um, and then Catesville, right in here, is running about four fifty, four seventy. So again, um, these roads are all close to the same, the rest of Mulberry out here is all running about five hundred, close to five hundred, four hundred, four twenty-five. So again, the rest of Mulberry in here, very similar to Catesville, and, um, Wood, Cuddy is running around two fifty, and Winter's running around, I believe it's around three fifty. But, uh, so you can see, these are the high ones, so, for, for instance, um, one of the questions you'd probably say, well, Jeff, put that in perspective, uh, some of the lesser roads, um, might have fifty cars on a day, so Springfield, um, uh, Wilson, uh, roads like that, uh, we're looking at maybe fifty to sixty cars a day. So the difference is, is quite, quite a lot in some of the roads. Uh, Melwood, um, some of the other roads, just so if you want, and again, I got copies, it's in the, we get your copy of it. Uh, Melwood's running about, uh, roughly close to two hundred, depending on what block you're in, um, Murphy's a little bit lower. Um, Langdon up here, again, a little bit lower, still around two hundred, hundred and fifty cars a day. But these are, Winter, Catesville, this area, Cuddy to Wood are all running between three fifty to almost five hundred. But really, to be honest, this little area right here at eighteen hundred, these blocks in here at eighteen hundred cars a day, that's considerable traffic.
Going to the green.
Yeah. A side note, uh, some of these roads, in particular, uh, Catesville, Wood, Cuddy, Winter, um, they're really busy between seven and nine, and three thirty and five thirty, they're traffic roads. So you're gonna see, uh, you go there at lunchtime, and there's not many, but you go there at eight o'clock or seven thirty in the morning, there's a lot of cars going up and down the road, so. We kind of keep that in the back of our mind when we're setting, setting the trucks out, uh, we would like those roads, uh, first priority to get out and, and go on, so. Um, and then each area has a section of road that are low priority. And what low priority would be, would be, um, our category sixes, so they'd be a lot of dead ends, um, our urban, our urban roads. So what happens, for instance, I'll use this one, because obviously this is our most, uh, heavily traffic road. The truck will, uh, do Pike first, Mulberry, get Mulberry done, and then go back in the scrapyard and clean up all the little stuff. Okay, uh, Healy, Healy's down in here, um, that sort of thing, so same with, uh, uh, the mid, the mid, uh, truck number three, he wants to get Catesville, Melwood and Murphy done, and then head back into Kerwood. Okay, um, truck number one, he does up here, Adelaide Village, he will go up and do his rooms up here, and then as he returns, he does Adelaide Village. And that, we use that as our guide, so that if there ever was, um, any problems on the road, we can present, uh, the maintenance, the winter maintenance program, saying that our first priority is to get the busy road stuff. And that's, that's basically how we set it up. So in a minor winter event, it'll take about three hours per area, per staff time, um, with an early morning call out at five AM. A normal winter event, and I'll explain what a winter event here is in a minute. So a normal winter event takes about five hours of staff time per area, and so an early morning start is around four AM. And then a major winter event, uh, will take seven hours or more, uh, per staff to do their area, and that, uh, call out is around three AM. So a majority of our winter events are minor, sanding the road, uh, drifts here, a little few drifts here or there. Um, majority of our events are the minor. A normal event would be a snowfall where we have to plow all the roads. So if we get over three inches of snow, um, it comes down, the trucks have to go out, do all the roads, um, that's what constitutes five hours. And then they, they come back to shop and they've covered all their routes. A major event, uh, would be, you know, a blizzard or a, a major storm where they've been predicting it, and the winds are blowing visi- visibility. The winds are blowing, visibility's bad, and it's a continuous, it's almost a continuous event through the day. Um, in cleaning the roads and 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 that sort of thing. What we do when we set those times, um, it's it's set almost, and this is. Not just here, but most municipalities, uh, you'll notice that it's set around the bus. Like, we work together with the buses and people going to work. So if we can get out at five AM and have eighty or ninety percent of the roads done for the buses. Um, that's what we're looking at. Four o'clock in the morning gives us a little extra time to try, and that's when buses will start to delay. Right, so if they get into a snow event where there's more than three inches on the road or plowing snow, we'll hear of a bus delay. Um, a two hour bus delay, so if their buses are delayed two hours. Um, that should give us enough time to get across our roads on a normal plow day. The cancellations come in when you have the big winter events, um, and we're working more than seven hours to try to keep the roads open, so. It kind of blends together with the buses, uh, with people who want to work and and that sort of thing. The other thing that when we set those times, um, that we think about, and again, I'll I'll make sure I'm following the report. Staff can only be on duty for fourteen hours by law. Uh, they then are required to take off at least eight. Um, and they're supposed to have ten, but if there's an emergency, we can bring it in two hours earlier. So if our guys come in at four, they have to be off the road by five and gone home by six in the evening. Uh, if they're in by three, they have to be basically off the roads around three o'clock. Uh, and or uh, or you know, four o'clock, and they have to be home, gone home by five o'clock. Um, so, uh, that's something that we can't, we can't cheat on that. They made the commercial drivers, um, follow these rules, we can't break them. Uh, winter happens, and they told municipalities that, uh, you have to be prepared for winter maintenance activities, so. Uh, to be honest, um, in all the years I've been doing this, uh, I don't find that a problem, fourteen hours is a long time. Um, I I think last year even when we had the big storm up in the far end. Uh, we rotated some guys, we changed up some hours that people started, uh, because it was shining, sun was shining in the south. We were able to keep everybody within their hours, uh, without a problem. Well, I have one other thing I want. Yeah, anyways, I'll uh, getting something, pop back up, I had something else. Uh, oh, I know what it is, so what, we run into a problem, and I'll read the next one, so. Request by, oh, no, I'm missing, uh, weekends and holidays have different traffic patterns, so the call out times may be slightly different. And the reason I go there is there's no sense bringing some guys in at three o'clock in the morning. Um, because we know there's no buses, we know there's no, it's not a workday, so we do adjust the times a little bit to suit the traffic patterns. Doesn't mean we ignore it. Um, we still know that people have to get up on Saturday morning and still do stuff, so it's not that we sleep until eight o'clock and then come in. It just means that we adjust some of the times. The reason we do that. Again, if we need the guys in the in the afternoon, it allows us to use them more in the afternoon, so if we burn their time in the middle of the night. You know, we're taking time away, say, if they want to go later in the afternoon, so. Request by O P P to do winter maintenance can happen, actually it happens quite, I've already had O P P call a couple of times about uh. Um, slippery spots or accidents. Um, we try to accommodate that because obviously there's been a hazard pointed out to us. And as hazards are hazards are pointed out, we have to address them. The real problem comes is when you get a call at two o'clock in the morning. And the O P P says, uh, this road is in terrible shape. Um, I have to set the clocks on the drivers, they can't come in. So, um, I've told O P P in the past, we're coming, uh, four o'clock's the earliest we can be here in the morning. And that's just, that's just the way it is, we can't, we can't do that. But again, that happens fairly rarely, most times we can, we can, we can, we need all the requests that O P P have given. The next thing I just want to touch base on, freezing rain. Freezing rain is one of the um, more dangerous situations. Um, I tend to activate the crew immediately when there's freezing rain. Especially if I know freezing rain is is either in the process of building up or or. Coming, and one, because it's dangerous, but two, it is the one thing that is so much easier to counteract before it happens. Um, once the freezing rain is on the road, it becomes very difficult to get the conditions under control, whereas a little bit of salt and sand. Just as it's freezing rain goes a long way, so I tend to activate the crews for freezing rain immediately. Uh, as soon as I'm aware that there's freezing rain out there, so. Um, and freezing rain. Conditions um, can be rain for most people, but on the back roads, particularly in February. Um, when there's so much frost in the ground, a rain can turn to ice on the back roads. Worse than a freezing rainstorm, so again, if I see there's rain coming in January and February, I'll have the guys ready to go. Uh, for the back roads, because again, once it starts, it's so much easier to 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 uh, take care of the sooner you can get at it. The winter activities remain flexible. Um, to accommodate different weather patterns, different, you know, activities that's happened, just like I said, it could be snowing in the north. Sun in the south, vice versa, I've seen it the other way around, uh, to to accommodate different staff. Somebody might get sick, holidays, um, equipment, uh, when equipment breaks down. Um, we may have to have, I seen last year, we had, uh, we had three trucks last year, uh, two of the trucks were broke down. So, uh, one truck was covering all the sandy roads in the in the municipality, we were using the graders. Uh, for plowing snow and the and the truck for sanding, sanding roads, again, that's flexible, so. Truck that's in area one, maybe the only one on the road, he may have to go all the way down to Winter to do the sanding. Um, which isn't a big deal, it's just part of the, part of the process, so. So you, the big thing is to stay flexible. Currently, the municipality has four sand or plow units. Uh, two, two graders. The graders are very important during ice storms or or freezing rain. Uh, particularly around the gravel roads, they they can ice blade, uh, the ice, uh, cut grooves in the ice. And they're uh, good as backup units to plow snow. Uh, we have four full-time staff, uh, we have one part-time staff that's on call-in and one supervisor. Uh, we have one, uh, sand salt storage shed in Napier. Uh, and the Middlesex County allows us to use, uh, to get sand and salt from their storage sheds shed. At the intersection of Egremont and Center. So, um, the two trucks that run out of Adelaide Garage use the depot, for the county depot to get their sand and salt. And the two trucks that run out of Napier Garage, um, get their sand and salt out of here. Uh, right now, um. The sand salt storage in Napier holds between twenty and twenty-five loads. Um, so we have to fill it up at least once during the winter, um, in particular depending on how heavy the winter is, so. And then, and then, I I, it's a good, it's a good relationship with the county up up there, it works well for the trucks in the north, so. Uh, the trucks also do the parking area here, uh, when needed. Uh, they help in the in the fire department parking lot, uh, and sand when needed. Um, and at the present moment, uh, we have no sidewalk maintenance, um, being done at the present time. I just love, also like to point out that the township has. Boundary agreements with Southwest Middlesex, Township of Brooks, Alvinston, and the Township of Warwick, which requires. Uh, we look after half the boundary roads, they look after the other half. So it works out great, um, there's no exchanging of funds, but we are responsible for a section of of the boundary road and they're. So, um, it works out pretty good. The township has agreements with North Middlesex, Middlesex Center that require Adelaide Metcalf to maintain the boundary. And which we then. Um, bill, bill, uh, half the cost back to those two municipalities. Uh, Strathroy-Caredock maintains, uh, the roads that are boundary in in the in the town of Strathroy. So they're the ones that have always taken the lead in there, just just so everybody kind of knows where we're working. Uh, the financial impact is covered under the operational budget, which we'll set in um. And we'll set in the new year. Um, and that's basically my report, I'm I'm assuming there's going to be some questions. Uh, which that's why we did this report, yes, so everybody could be familiar with it, but. My recommendation is that council resolve to adopt the the um, the winter program as outlined by myself. I'm open for questions, so.
Thank you, Jeff, I'm assuming there's some questions, I had some questions for Jeff, I emailed them, was that Friday, and got some answers, they're not asked, and I'll ask them at the end, is there any other?
Um, I was wondering about overtime, so when, when the guys are in at three or four in the morning. If if it's just a an annual event, do they go home after eight hours, or do they fill in a, or do they automatically get overtime?
Yeah, good mayor, um, they get overtime, um, they're basically, their day is from seven till four. Um, they are, um, given the choice, if they want to go home, they can, after their eight hours. Um, but they have to, I may need them, I don't want them going home and calling them back in, because once they come home, I. It's their own time, we're off duty, I can bring them back in and I have. But generally, depending on the event and what's going on, um, they may have to do cleanup in the in the afternoon. And follow-up maintenance in the afternoon, but generally, um, their set, their set time is seven to four. And the call out, because it's not scheduled, it, their phone rings, they don't know if it's going to ring or not. It's it's tough to set that as a as a schedule for them to come in and then go home.
Good question, um, on the roads, you've indicated that the minimum, um. Standard for the snow removals is three inches, so what is it for a sidewalk?
Oh, I'll have.
Because we don't do right now any sidewalk, and I'm just thinking from my liability standpoint, if we're going to adhere to this minimum standard, that may be subject to discuss.
It it could, um, the sidewalk, and I can look, I've got the standards here. Almost though we should be talking about even just slippery conditions. Because on a roadway, um, slippery conditions, uh, you're supposed to address them as soon as practicable, correct?
Practicable, yeah.
And that's the same for sidewalks.
Yeah.
Um, so, I mean, I can give you the exact depth, uh, for clearing the snow, but really, to be honest, uh, slippery conditions are the same.
On sidewalk as a road.
Yeah, yeah, and at this point, we just haven't started a program for that.
And is that something you perceive possibly bringing forward in the budget?
I could see us, um, looking at the sidewalk as a whole, uh, what's going to move forward, because I think there had, I mean, there's been some talk. About our sidewalk program and what we expect to have here. Um, and we've talked about, um, there is some sidewalk in Kerwood at the present moment. Um, that's not being maintained, but at the present moment, it needs to be upgraded to be maintained. So at this point, we we really couldn't maintain it because of the sheep it's in, there's, there's, there's.
Some unevenness, yeah.
And 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 the width of the sidewalk makes a difference for the machine to go down. Um, so at this point, um, we're not there yet. Uh, but I wanted to make sure everybody, point everybody out that that is something that has to be addressed.
Yeah, it's supposed to be operating there, for sure.
And and I think that comes, Mr. Mayor, I think that comes through, there has been some talk about what are. Where this municipality is going with sidewalks in general. Um, and that's open to discussion, uh, where we want to go there. Uh, but right now, we don't, we don't have the maintenance for winter on the sidewalks.
Thank you.
Just for clarification on that, I sent, I think it was Jeff being happy on that, another neighboring municipality, they only maintain certain portions of their sidewalks, so that's something that we could possibly do in the future as well. If you wanted, if you want to talk on that, just, I don't exactly, but they have to follow our.
Yeah, we talked a little bit about that, and and just like anything, you can close, like, we do have roads that are closed for winter maintenance, we sign them. The hardest part, and Kathy, I've been talking about this, we don't know exactly what our liability is, just because we close something. We don't know what the liability is, we sign it, we say, please don't use it, um, but it's still our infrastructure, it's still, it's still there. And if for something to happen, just because we say it's closed, we're we're, we need to get that clarified better. I I saw, I read the the, um, the Brookville, and I thought that was, I needed something, but I still think you would have to sign every sidewalk. I think you would have to barricade off, in my opinion, um, because all it takes is one person to to say, well, I'm gonna, I I didn't read that. I didn't, I didn't see that notice, anyways, that's just my opinion, I, we talked about getting, uh, maybe a legal, um, a legal opinion on it. And just see where we stand on closing, closing sidewalks and closing roads for winter maintenance, because we have two roads. Two, three roads, three roads that we have no winter maintenance on, and we've discussed about other roads possibly joining that. But before we expand that, we talked about maybe getting legal. Uh, a legal opinion on on closing roads for the winter times.
I think until the provincial government changes a one percent role regarding liability, we'd still be on the hook.
Yeah.
It's unfortunate, for now.
I I agree, I I totally agree.
Catherine, can I?
And through Mayor Curtis to you, Jeff. Um, given that the roads are our biggest risk for liability problems. Do you see that it would be a good thing to get into a program where the trucks are tracked and recorded, um.
Oh.
On the computer, that that would give us more protection?
Yeah, and and I've been looking into, um, this particularly more of the patrolling and the tracking of the trucks during winter maintenance. Um, is all done on paper now. We write down constantly where we're going, what time, what the road conditions are, uh, the weather conditions. Uh, there's a whole bunch of information that gets done manually right now. Um, and we've talked about, uh, there's great technology out there with smartphones. That can easily GPS, um, patrol roads, um, plow roads, and yes, that's something we will definitely be going in the in the near future for. It's not here this year, but uh, it definitely will be here shortly, definitely. Even the insurance companies are are recommending that, that electronic tracking be integrated into the maintenance programs.
Thank you.
Considered thoroughly, any questions, no?
Just, just as an aside, last year, the, um, I live right beside one of the, um, no winter maintenance roads, and. Every year, some yahoo goes in there with a four-wheel drive truck and gets stuck and walks to one of the nearest farmers. But I noticed last year when we had that lovely dump of snow, they put a, uh, four, five-foot barricade of snow.
Through the crossing.
Across the road, that worked really well. It was the only part of Rabotham that didn't have garbage on it last year.
A side note, Mr. Mayor, I think there's something to do with one of the roads up there on Google Maps that send people down one of our roads. Because there's one, and I'm not sure exactly if it's Newell or Hansford up in that, up in this corner. But just so people know, I believe it's, uh, Rabotham, and I should have, I should have had this better outline, but Rabotham, and it's the bottom block.
Yeah.
The bottom block, uh, Newell up here in the top end, and I believe Hansford. Uh, Hansford must know, we knew Hansford all the way through, so there's two up there, and this be Newell. I think it's on Google, Google Maps or something, sends people down there, we get a constant bunch of cars going, stuck in the spring.
Google also sends people down Kaiser Road, which makes those four or five people really tech'd off, so.
So anyways, that's just a side note.
So I think, yeah, the questions I had were pretty much answered when everybody else asked some questions, but the only other one that wasn't touched on was. Was, did the routes change at all from getting the road counts this past summer?
Um, actually, uh, no, no, um, the the minimum maintenance standards that were set up, uh, by Alden, um, previously. uh, basically what you see or what I explained is that exactly what the guys have been doing for the last few years. Um, other than it gives us a better idea of how much traffic is on pikes and mall fairy that, you know, we always knew they were busy, we just didn't realize how busy. Um, and then the other side of the reversal coin is it shows where the traffic is not going. Some of the roads that do not have any traffic, that maybe, maybe no winter maintenance is a, is something to look at for some roads. So yeah, there, Mr. Mayor, there wasn't a lot of real surprises, but the data actually is good to have. So it's, it's a physical data that we now can say we've got, so.
Okay. If there's no more questions, we have the recommendation there that, uh, resolve the council adopt the winter maintenance program as outlined by the winter maintenance program report prepared by the public works manager. Councilor Clark and Councilor Brody. All those in favor? Posed and not carried. Perfect. Well done, well explained.
I know, just some questions, maybe ping them off.
And throughout the year, if there's any questions, please, please just, just go.
Okay, so moving on to the next report, which is our clerks.
Thanks, Ms. Smith. Um, in my report, uh, it's discussing the, uh, change of council schedule for the months of January and February. So as per our procedural bylaw, our council meetings each month are the first and third Monday. Um, so for January, we have it scheduled for the seventh and the twenty-first, and in February, it's the fourth and nineteenth. Um, there has been some, um, conflicts with the meeting schedule with some council members for the month of January and February. So I'm looking for council's recommendation for moving the dates around. Um, we also have to remember that there's Roma and Good Rose Conference. Roma's at the end of January and Oga's at the end of February. So in order to, if we were to look at moving the third Monday of the month, we'd have to stay away from those two weeks, uh, as we have staff and/or council members at both of these conferences. Um, so my proposal is to move the first meeting of the month to the second Monday. So that would be moving January seventh to January fourteenth and moving February fourth to February eleventh. Now, the only thing is that that makes two meetings back to back. So you'd have a meeting January fourteenth and January twenty-first. And the same would be in February. You'd have it February eleventh and February nineteenth, which would be the Tuesday because Monday is a staff holiday. Um, and just for council's awareness, um, again, as per our procedural bylaw, uh, the council meetings for March and April are Monday, March fourth, Monday, March eighteenth, Monday, April first, and Monday, April fifteenth. Um, there's no financial impact in regards to this report. Uh, once council approves the budget, the two meetings per month will, is already calculated in, uh, council's moderation. Um, so I'm just looking for council's, uh, approval for changing the council meeting schedule for January and February.
Any discussion on that? Okay, move our second report. Council Brody and Deputy Mayor Hendricks. Okay, all those in favor? Posed and carried.
So just to confirm, so everyone's aware, that will be January seventh, or I'm sorry, January fourteenth and January twenty-first, and February eleventh and February twenty-first. No, sorry, nineteenth. Be the nineteenth. Or Tuesday the nineteenth.
Not what it started on, I don't know if you threw that, but.
Hey, I know it's really far ahead, but, um, I will be missing the eighteenth. I would like to not have to miss the first also. So if you could consider.
Which month, right?
Um, March and April. So I'm, I will be gone March eighteenth, but I would, I will also be gone April first. So I would really love it if the, if the first could be moved.
Can we do that? Well, it's a little bit close.
Yeah.
Just in case there's not more conflict.
Yeah, I, what I'll do is, um, I'll bring a staff report to council again for councils to reconsider. Or to consider moving that.
Yeah, yeah. No, I just wanna give you a heads up.
No, I appreciate that, 'cause I'll do a staff report and, and if anyone else has any other dates that are a conflict in that time, let me know and I can add that to the report as well. I wasn't sure if it was carried, so, yeah.
Oh, yeah, it was carried.
Sorry, yeah.
I didn't say carried, but I wasn't sure.
So the, uh, second report that I have there is, um, the two thousand eighteen to twenty twenty-two council appointments to the Canadians and boards. Um, the purpose of this report is for council to consider the future appointment of council members to the two communities and boards following the, uh, municipal election in October and the inauguration, inauguration that was last Monday. Um, community appointments sit at the discretion of council. And, um, there are two current external committees that council has representation. Uh, one is the Saint Clair Region Conservation Authority and the other one's the Blue Water Recycling Association. I did receive an email from the municipality Middlesex Center that Bob Harvey has been appointed to sit on the board of directors for the Asable Bayfield Conservation Authority jointly with ourselves. Um, if council has, uh, an interest in sitting on that board, um, you can let me know and I can talk to Middlesex Center regarding that. Um, we weren't consulted as if we had anybody interested, so I thought I'd bring that up, uh, to council now. Um, the financial impact, Saint Clair Region Conservation Authority pays the appointed board Canadian member directly. And the Blue Water Recycling Association is as a representative for the township at two annual general meetings unless elected as a member of the board. Uh, so I'm looking for council's, um, decision on who they would like to have as representation on those two boards. And it would be for the, uh, council term from November first to November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two for both boards.
Yeah, Councilor Fennick?
Um, I'd appreciate remaining on the Saint Clair Conservation Authority if I can because through it, I also, uh, am on the programming council of Western Fair District as the representative through Saint Clair that was elected on it. So I just appreciate, um, if I can still sit on that when the council's approval.
Is anyone else interested in sitting on Saint Clair?
We don't live there.
You don't live where?
In the Saint Clair Conservation. I'm, I, I live in the.
If you check the map there, we have, yeah, should be right there, remember? But we do show where the two, uh, where the boundary is between the Asable Bayfield, which is to the north of the township, and the balance of the township is in the Saint Clair region.
So it's right here, Western Fair, or what did, did you explain that a little bit?
I, I was nominated to the programming council, so I ran for election as the representative from Saint Clair Conservation Authority.
Oh, okay. And when did that happen?
That happened, uh, two years ago and then I was acclaimed for this two-year term.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Councilor Clark, are you interested at all or, um, sitting on that board?
I'd be interested in Saint Clair, but the, the, if Betty Ann's already got a commitment, then I would be up to that.
Okay. Okay, and then Blue Water Recycling?
I'd be interested in attending that.
Thanks.
Okay, so everyone, jumping up and down, kind of head over heels. So it looks like we have, uh, resolved that the following counselors be appointed as listed below and staff be directed to proceed with the appointment by law for council's approval by the next council meeting. And then that'd be A, Saint Clair Region Conservation Authority, which is Councilor McKinnon. And that's from December first, two thousand eighteen to November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. And then Blue Water Recycling Association, Deputy Mayor, uh, Hendricks, December first, two thousand eighteen to November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Move your secondor for that? Councilor Clark and Councilor Brody, all those in favor? Posed and not carried. So that's it, isn't it? Okay. Oh, the Asable Bayfield one? Sure. Any discussion on the Asable Bayfield Conservation Authority?
I'd, um, interesting. I've, I've, I've done a sharing a chair with Bob Harvey in a whole different context, but I'm really not interested in sitting on that. I thought I was at one time, but he couldn't have it.
Okay. I don't think we have an appetite to have somebody sitting on that, huh? Okay. Okay, so our next three, several reports are from our CEO Treasurer. Cat?
Thank you, Ms. Smith. The first item is the invoice payment approval for the period of November sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen to December sixth, two thousand and eighteen. And the total of the checks being submitted for approval is two hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars and four cents.
Is there any questions on the accounts? Okay, Deputy Mayor Hendricks is the one she's trying to find?
Yeah.
Oh, um, it was on page twenty of twenty-five. Um, the Blue Water Recycling for Waste Disposal, is, is our garbage now going to Warwick?
Yes, it has since May of this year.
That's what I thought, okay.
Any other questions at all? Councilor Brody, any questions? Okay, Clark?
Um, I had them unanswered prior to the meeting, so I'm good.
Good. Uh, we, uh, motion then to resolve that council approved the account listings for the period November sixteenth to December sixth, two thousand eighteen, in the amount of two hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars and four cents as presented. Councilor Clark and Deputy Mayor Hendricks, all those in favor? Posed and not carried.
Uh, item number two is in regards to, uh, continuation of business. Uh, there will be an extending waiting time between, uh, this council meeting and the next council meeting. So staff is just asking for requests to continue to pay the accounts and invoices that are approved in the two thousand and eighteen budget prior to the next regular council meeting. Um, I will note that all checks are signed by the mayor or deputy mayor as well as a staff member. So there is a checks and balances in place for those.
Councilor McKinnon, second and five. Councilor Clark, all those in favor? Posed and not carried.
Item number three is from the Asable Bayfield Conservation Authority. It's their two thousand and nineteen proposed budget. We do pay a levy into the watershed of the Asable Bayfield Conservation Authority. And our, uh, levy is based on the current value assessment attributed to the property within that watershed. The two thousand and nineteen levy is twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars, which is a general levy of twenty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars and a project levy of seven thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and overall increase of nine hundred and sixty-one dollars over the two thousand and eighteen levy. Uh, the Asable Bayfield Conservation intends to finalize their budget after December twentieth board meeting. And if we have any comments or concerns, we need to send them to them. A copy of the proposed budget and municipal levies was supplied to council in their package. The proposed increase in the levy will not significantly change the two thousand and nineteen township operating budget. And staff is recommending that we receive the proposed budget from the Asable Bayfield Conservation Authority and that this levy amount be included in the two thousand and nineteen township budget.
Any questions or comments? Move your secondor. Councilor Fennick and Councilor Brody, all those in favor? Posed and carried.
The next item is from the Saint Clair Con, Region Conservation Authority. It's their two thousand and nineteen draft budget. Again, it is based on the current value assessment attributed to the property within the watershed. The two thousand and nineteen budget is proposing a levy of sixteen thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars, which is an increase of one thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars over the two thousand and eighteen levy. Uh, they request any comments or concerns to be provided to them December the eleventh. I believe their next board meeting is Thursday. And, uh, a copy of the, uh, two thousand and nineteen budget has been provided to council for review. Again, the proposed increase in the levy to the township will not significantly increase the two thousand and nineteen township operating budget. And staff is recommending that we receive the two thousand and nineteen draft budget from the Saint Clair Conserv, Region Conservation Authority and that the levy amount be included in the two thousand and nineteen township budget.
Councilor Fennick, do you have anything to add? No?
No, a lot of the, uh, increase was from the flood control. And a lot of the work that's being done is, uh, being done towards Saint Clair. But we get fifty percent of that back through our government. So when you see a large, uh, project in the Saint Clair, uh, in Sarnia location, we get fifty percent of that in the, uh, city of Sarnia that helps in that as well.
Does it take a couple of years to come back? Is that how that works?
No, it gets pretty fast. It's within that year's budget.
Okay, so the recommendation there. Councilor Fennick and Councilor Clark, all those in favor? Posed and not carried.
Item number five is the two thousand and nineteen annual billing statement from the Ontario Provincial Police. Um, policing services for the township are provided through the Ontario Provincial Police. The township receives a billing statement package on an annual basis which provides information on our costs. The two thousand and nineteen grand total for billing for OPP services is four hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars. An increase of fourteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars from the four hundred and eight, eight hundred and ten thousand dollars for two thousand and eighteen policing. The two thousand and seventeen year-end adjustment has been calculated with a net reduction of three thousand and fifty-three dollars, which has been applied to the two thousand and nineteen billing. The billing statement package includes comparative information on an annual basis on the calls for service counts. You have been provided with a complete copy of the two thousand and nineteen annual billing statement. The increase in the OP billing, OPP billing may impact the amount to be raised in the two thousand and nineteen township budget. And the recommendation is that council receive the OPP Municipal Policing two thousand and nineteen annual billing statement report as prepared by the CEO Treasurer. Uh, we're also recommending, uh, as discussed previously, that we invite the OPP to attend a council meeting just to review the services they provide and, uh, give some update to council on their, uh, feedback on township services. 'Cause you see that we also get the information on our calls for service and our accounts and just how the OPP is working to keep those down for our municipality.
Anything, any questions at all?
So this, this cost for them, it must be sent for all the, all the other municipalities, all these three?
Correct. Yes, there is a base cost of, yeah, three hundred and, three hundred and fifty-three, or three hundred and sixty-nine, fifty-eight per household that we pay. And that's similar to most municipalities. We did see that we had an increase this year, but we were, we had a small, slight decrease last year. Um, it is a two-year reconciliation period, so we won't see any reconciliation from two thousand and nineteen until twenty twenty-one. So they do take a little time to get their costs all aligned, but, um, in two thousand and eighteen, their contracts all expire so that we will, will be facing increased cost in policing for uniformed officers in two thousand and nineteen.
Any other questions at all? Consider the recommendation there, to resolve that council receive the OPP Municipal Policing two thousand and nineteen annual billing statement report as presented by the CEO Treasurer. Councilor Brody and Councilor Clark, all those in favor? Posed and not carried.
Next. Item number six is in regards to a strategic plan review. Uh, during council orientation, a section of the manual prepared by Clerk Turk, specifically pages five and six, touched on a strategic plan. Strategic plan is important to establish a framework for the township that consists of a vision for the future, a mission. a mission to define what we are doing, values that shape actions, strategies that focus on key success approaches, and goals and actions plans to guide daily, weekly, monthly, and yearly actions. The first strategic plan with the Township Valley Metcalf was approved on February first, two thousand and sixteen. Priorities and tasks identified in the strategic plan require review and updating to ensure that the vision, mission, and goals are consistent with the desired direction of the current members of council and in line with the evolution of the township. In order to ensure that a thorough and engaging process is carried out, staff recommend that a request for proposal be issued to have the strategic planning exercise carried out to obtain professional direction to facilitate the process as early as possible in this council term. The financial impact, the quoted project cost for the preparation of the two thousand and fifteen report was seventeen thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy cents, including the HST. There were also incidental costs for the hosting of various workshop working groups. Although there is a strategic plan in place to provide a basis for discussion, is proven to anticipate that a request for proposal return costs similar to those received in two thousand and fifteen. With having a request for proposal returned in early two thousand and nineteen, the expense can be planned for in the in the operating budget. And it's being recommended that council direct staff to issue a request for proposal for a strategic planning exercise.
Any discussion, Councillor McKinnon?
Um, I'm not sure if we're at the point in time where we have to hire a consultant at seventeen thousand to review the plan. Um, I don't see that we've taken the actions that were in the strategic plan to uh look at action taken, barriers occurring, recommendations on revisions and new input, and other key information. So for those reasons, I'm not in favor of the recommendation for a request for proposal at this time. I would like to see this council sit down, look at it, and see what's applicable, what we have achieved, and uh where we might re-dig it somewhat. My opinions.
Any other comments? Councillor?
I I'm in agreement with uh with this councillor. Um, when you review the um the strategic plan that was done in the past, a lot of the the key points there have still not been actioned or have not been completed. I think that uh we still need to have a strategic planning exercise of sorts, but amongst ourselves. Um, and for some of us that went around door-to-door in the township, there were issues that were raised, and those could be brought forward at that time, and they 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 feed into that. So to actually go ahead and pay for another um strategic formal strategic plan, I think might be really not a good use of money at this point in time. But I still think we need to go through the exercise amongst uh the council.
Yeah, I I'd agree. I think doing a new one, when we got a little bit of work left to do on the old one, it'll be a little premature. And maybe I'd like to see the newer part of the council maybe get their feet a little wet before you put big new bold ideas in.
Councillor Brody?
Yeah, I I'm actually kinda thinking the same way. I don't know if we need to spend that kind of money, like, do most townships do it? Maybe five years, or wouldn't you like?
So s- uh strap lines are typically three to four years, and then every three to four years they'll update them and.
Yeah. Yeah, I I'm in I'm in favor of delaying, I.
So if we were to not go through the formal process of doing a strat plan with a consultant and everything else, how do you foresee, like just having staff and just having just asking to figure out how we're going to either update the plan or just having open dialogue at at a meeting at some point and, you know, talking to, you know, what we've heard on the campaign trail and that sort of thing? Or what are we kind of, what what are we thinking? Councillor Clark?
I I think open dialogue is good to just get it all out there. If you have like a shopping list that you've collected during the campaign period, that would be a good place, I think, to share it. There's no point going one-on-one with everybody. Everybody should be on the same page. And then taking the existing strat plan and saying, okay, let's review that. And where is there overlap on the issues that have been brought forward, and if there's extra things to be added, more of a shopping list and not um. Yeah, then because I mean if the things haven't been actioned so far, a plan is only good if you execute it, and if it's not been executed, there's no point. You know, we may we might as well build on what's already there, I think.
Yeah, I I'm a similar, have a have a just a strategic plan meeting and get it all out there.
So we're not looking at like a really, just a revised plan, like what we currently have and then add and subtract from what is currently there?
Yes. Mm-hmm.
That's kind of the thought.
Yeah, and if if we find that that we really do need to rip it up, we still can.
All right.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, because we don't know what are the various issues are yet, I need to talk to them.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We still, I think we have to do it, just to see how or how it's going.
Yes. Yeah, we already have a base there, why not add to it and subtract the things that we, because there is some things in that plan that I don't think uh are achievable.
Yes. What the look, no.
And there's some things that haven't been touched that need to. Um, so then Kathy, would you, would we have Kathy as the CEO be the lead on kind of the discussion points and kind of that type of thing?
I think so.
Yes, that that was the whole intent, was to have someone lead it, so that um the the thoughts and the um what council's direction and what they want to see put together gets formulated into a point.
Yeah.
I think Kathy can do it, because it's just a matter of dissecting it, looking at our actions taken, and and as you pointed out, uh Curtis, looking at the areas that are not achievable, and just re-digging it.
Okay.
Okay. Like, so do we have a date in mind, like it says to move forward with it, like as soon as possible in a new term is the best way to do it?
Yeah.
And that way, um, we'll be in advance of budget time and, you know, what the what's anticipated.
Budgets.
So we're not going to um run into crunch times with, you know, we decided we want to look at something and we don't have time because the budget should be passed. Is there a date, like is there early, like January? Do you want to look at it as a separate unit itself, a separate meeting, strategic plan meeting itself?
Yeah.
Um, we do have uh notice requirements that we have to adhere to to make sure we're publicly open and transparent as well.
I would suggest that we would do it before the budget, just in case there is something in there that we need to have included in our budget process.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I would say January would make the most amount of sense.
Mm, I agree.
Um, and I would say instead of doing like one kind of full day meeting, having it so it's two half-day meetings. So in that way, it's a little, it's not bogged down in one day in one process. And then two, and then hopefully get something at a next regular meeting combined for couns- or yeah, for council with that. Now, are we, are we willing to set those meeting dates? Yeah.
Our dates are good, because then we can work towards getting it, so we can get um on a rate of what what our plan is for the new.
Yeah. Any other certainty, see where it's already gone?
Uh, seventeenth. Mike's gone earlier.
I'm good in January than on that. Think I'm pretty good in January.
I thought you were gone.
Gone on the first.
Well, I'm gone the first week.
Okay.
Like the first to the seventh.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So the week of the seventh?
Yeah. Sorry, say it again.
The the week of the seventh, does that make sense?
We give a seven.
Sure. Yep.
No.
I'm gone Monday, so don't have it on the Tuesday, cause I'm like, I'm like, great.
Okay.
Nine, Tuesday.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the ninth will be the first opportunity.
That'd be, that'd be fair.
What time?
Are we talking daytime?
Time.
daytime?
Okay. Sure.
Sure, does that work for new, new working Monday's or something?
Just a bunch of questions.
Well, I've got enough time that I can rearrange my schedule, hopefully.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, cause I I do have something leaving, so I can't do Wednesday evening.
So Wednesday at?
January, do you want to do morning, uh, or a early afternoon, whatever works best for?
Either or.
Do you have this for?
Is there a better time for you, given what's in the office? Oh, okay, anytime.
Morning works better after lunch.
Okay, one o'clock.
On my thirty-five.
So sorry to those people that drag at three o'clock, that's when I come to life.
One?
Sure.
One o'clock?
Yeah, okay. And then do you want to set like a second date right now, or set at that that meeting? Or are we thinking one is?
I see, set it at that meeting.
Sounds about that meeting, I would say.
Okay.
Are you gonna get too far off of your schedule?
Yeah. So, okay, so that works a lot, so we need a motion to.
Yeah. Yeah, so definitely.
Okay. Resolve that council approve
Schedule.
The scheduling of the strategic plan. I'm writing this up. Strat plan. Resolve that council prove the scheduling of the strat plan for Wednesday, January ninth, at one P M, and staff be directed to provide public notice.
They're good? Okay, move around second or for that?
Well, if I may, the public notice is only informing the public, but the public won't be participating, so it's just to make it a sort of, yeah, just, yeah.
Or?
No, it's just, yeah, it's aware that public notice by law.
It's just so that public's aware that we'll be having that meeting.
I see, remove the word public then, just have notice. Or it's bylaw you're trying to refer to, I assume.
Okay, directed to provide notice as per our public notice bylaw.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, move by Councillor McKinnon, second by Councillor Clark.
Not noticed.
All those in favor? Opposed and carried. So between now and January ninth, read through the uh current strat plan, mark it up a lot, and you have your list that you have when you were out uh knocking on doors and everything else, so we can yeah, do that all done.
Item number seven is designating signing authorities for the township. Um, a bylaw designated the signing authority for the township for banking purposes has not been updated for a few council terms. Currently, all checks require two signatures, one from an elected official being the mayor or deputy mayor, and one from staff being the CEO or treasurer. The signing authorities will be required to sign off on all online commercial banking transactions as well. Um, this is coming up, we're getting the um, in twenty nineteen, we're moving to um remote deposit as well as uh online banking to be able to do banking without having to um pay bills at the bank. It is in the best interest of the township to designate two staff members to hold signing authority, and the recommendation is to have the CEO, treasurer, or clerk appointed as signing authority for banking purposes. And there is no financial impact, it's part of our duties to provide signatures on checks. And the recommendation is that council designate the mayor and deputy mayor as elected as elected signing authority, and the CEO, treasurer, and clerk as staff signing authority with requirement for one elected person and one staff person to countersign all checks and approve online banking transactions as recommended by the CEO, treasurer, and that the clerk be directed to prepare a bylaw to implement council direction.
So the recommendation there, move around second or?
Councillor.
Councillor Clark, seconded by Councillor Brody, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed and not scared.
Next report is in regards to the Ontario Cannabis Legalization Implementation Fund. Uh, the Minister of Finance announced funding for all municipalities through the Ontario Cannabis Legalization Implement Fund, the OCLIP. Uh, it's forty million dollars in funding over two years to help Ontario with the implementing cost of recreational cannabis relegalization. OCLIP money will be distributed in two payments. The first payment of funds will be given on five thousand dollars to each municipality. The Township Valley Metcalf received the first payment allocation notice in the amount of five thousand dollars, and you have a cop- a copy of it as attached for free. The second payment of funds will be based on that the township has opted out of hosting private retail stores by January twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen. If the township has not opted out, a minimum of five thousand dollars will be provided, which means we will be able to host retail store locations will be hosted in the Valley Metcalf. If the township has opted out, the maximum amount of five thousand dollars will be provided. If we opt out, we're not guaranteed five thousand dollars. And if we try to opt back in at a later date, if someone chooses, we will not get any more funding. So if you opt in, you'll get five thousand dollars the first year, and possibly likely the minimum of five thousand dollars in the second year. If you opt out, maximum amount you'll get is five thousand dollars this year. You also get a minimum payment after that, but it's based on the number of households, and it's drastically reduced. I did calculation, it was less than eighteen hundred dollars, and then you never receive another dollar from the OCLIP. Even if we opted back in to be able to host legalized cannabis um retail locations. Uh, there has been, uh, there is restricted use of the funds. We need to ensure that we're paying for the implementation costs related to the relegalization of cannabis, but no reporting requirements on the use of the funds have been developed yet. Um, what they're anticipating is that the increase in the OPP costing is going to likely uh be detrimental to small municipalities, and that's what some of it is for. Uh, the true effect of the legalization of cannabis on municipal costs, especially police costing, are not known at this time. In addition, to increased policing costs, the township will need to review and implement policies related to the workplace and to smoking in public places, including appropriate signage. Um, we don't know all of the ramifications at this time, so we're just asking that um council consider opting in and making sure we get the five thousand dollars in both years. Um, if you review the report from planner Erin Bash, she does outline similar um information. It goes into a little further into what is considered, um, what they will leave for the land use part of it. Um, in Valley Metcalf, we do have very few a- areas currently zoned for a retail cannabis location, but that doesn't preclude someone from applying to have a location rezoned. Um, not expecting council to make a decision on it tonight, because it is a lot of information, and it is a decision that um council has to consider a way out based on what they think is best for the municipality. Um, we can opt in and provide some sort of direction to the Alcohol and Gaming Commission, but that doesn't mean that they're going to have any regard for what we do say. But uh we do have very few places today that would be able to qualify for a retail location for a cannabis store. But they can apply to have something reasonably to apply for.
My question, I'm not sure if it if it's something you can answer or or if it needed Erin to answer, but from what I understood there, if we allow retail, uh, but look, we have Hamlet Commercial and Village Commercial and Corridor Commercial.
Mm-hmm.
And they all allow different types of retail. What I was wondering is whether we'd be able to limit those particular sales to either one, any or all of those uh zones.
No, current legislation precludes us from amending our zoning bylaw to not allow cannabis retail locations. So we can't be reactive. If we, if it allows a retail location today,
So anywhere. Okay. Okay.
And they fit the criteria, then we cannot stop them from opening that unless there is something to do with the uh school zone.
Okay.
Or there's another, um, if it's next to a like a rehabilitation center or a drug addiction facility, then we would be able to have a better
Yeah.
um reason to deny the application, but um we cannot.
We don't have any commercial close to any of those anyways, so that's scary.
No.
Yeah, I wish so bad, it's pretty small.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, yes, our our um Center Road Corridor is is quite limited by the size requirements. We're not likely going to see a cannabis retail to the size that's required. Um, the one area that it could happen is Kerwood, Kerwood, would be our our one area that does have some small areas that are commercially zoned.
The general store. Well, my my thought was the Gaming Commission also allows lottery tickets and stuff in the gas station store.
Mm-hmm.
So it could be sold out of those type of places, which we have a very limited number of.
Yeah, there you go.
And I suspect that the general store in Corridor, because in fact they sell guns and ammo, there might be, that may not be a. And I suspect that, or the general store in Corridor, because in fact they sell guns and ammo, there might be, that may not be allowed there.
Correct.
I think with our minimum, our minimum amount of risk, we might as well take the money.
I, I, and, and I also see the, we have a greenhouse that could easily put a retail up let in.
I don't know if they'd be.
They're not a guarantee of the health file there, because that's medical marijuana as opposed to reanimation of the game.
It, it potentially could apply for, uh, rezoning, it's not zoned for commercial retail. So it would have to go through the whole zoning process to happen, portion amended to be able to qualify for the retail location.
Yeah. There probably not.
Mm-hmm.
At this point in time, there's been no application for that with that developments.
So Kathy, you're not asking for us to make a decision today or?
If, if council wants to think about it a little bit more, I mean, it, I don't know if you wanted to go and get, um, some public input, some municipalities have opted to, to have public input, um, again, we are not, we're not likely going to see a lot of public input on it. We have very small areas where it would be potentially even allowed to be in existence.
Counsel.
Um, so your report, did you not indicate that you're also waiting on additional information from the county?
No, that, that was, that was, that was the report that you received on Friday, when you picked up the package, that's for.
That was it. Oh, okay. So there's not more coming?
There is nothing more coming, no, they've, they've done their reporting and what they see as a, from a legal land use requirement. We can't change our, our zoning bylaw to percolate cannabis.
So basically, if we, if we didn't opt in and somebody applies in our township and gets it, it'll be our cost of all the rules after that.
Correct, we would get no offsetting revenue.
No offset.
Right.
And even though it wants it, the, there's a comment in there about the excise tax, once it goes over a million, they'll do some
Yes.
sharing, I mean, it'll be proportionate to households, I'm sure, so it'll be negligible, but I mean.
Yeah, we don't have to, we might not get additional here.
It's around. Yeah. And I think the reality is to, not that I'm a consumer of the product, but, uh, that a lot of the businesses would be done online anyway, so I don't think our risk is kind of small.
Yes.
I mean, it's, it's a changing day, whether we personally agree or not, it's, it's the business decision, so.
Okay, so the recommendation is just to accept the report? Are we wanting to make a decision on to whether or not we want to opt in or opt out tonight? Or we have two more meetings before that deadline of January twenty second, so.
I'd say, uh, if, if we could, um, let's leave it for a bit and then if anybody is reading the minutes from, that are posted online that speaks to that, they would have an opportunity to show up in January if they felt strongly.
Yeah, that makes sense.
That makes sense, yeah.
Okay, so, are we wanting to have both of them motion?
Motion six.
Yep.
Number six and not number?
Both, because they're two separate reports.
Okay. Okay, so we're gonna start with the, the first motion, which was the, from the planner. So resolve that council received the information report regarding the retail cannabis as presented by the C A O treasurer and that council acknowledged the deadline date to make decision no later than January twenty second, two thousand and nineteen. Okay, Council Brody and Council McKinnon? All those in favor? Opposed and carried? And then the next one, which is resolve that council received the Ontario Cannabis Legalization Implementation Fund report as presented by the C A O treasurer and that the report be reviewed in conjunction with the report from County Planning Department. Through, through their end. Sorry, Deputy Herr Hendricks and Councilor Clark, all those in favor? Opposed and carried.
So we return that to the first regular meeting in January and if there's any comments, we will provide those as well.
Just, uh, I'm in the discussion area before we voted, um, I, I just, I went through the police report and the amount of cannabis charges is negligible here, so. And that's when it was illegal, so. I, I can't see a whole lot of, unless more people are just going to try it, because it's legal and do stupid things, but.
One up, sure.
One area that they do say we may see more calls is the stopping of people on the roadside for roadside testing. So that's where we would like to see increasing the O P P cost is that, um, any random pullovers could be charged back to the, if they're on township roads, they get, uh, served against our township, so.
Uh, so, report number nine is Middlesex County Road Widening Policies. This is just for, um, council's information. Uh, council, when sitting as a committee of adjustment for purposes of hearing consent applications, may approve a condition related to the road widening dedication to the county of Middlesex. The Planning Act permits the county to acquire these lands as deemed necessary through the county official plan. The county has traditionally only been requiring the dedication of lands along the severed portion. County council reviewed this policy at their November thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen meeting and has approved the requirement of the deci- dedication of lands for county road winding purposes from both the severed and retained lands. A copy of the letter from Chris Trainee, county engineer, and Dirk Vanderwerf, director of planning for the county of Middlesex is attached for council's review. There is no financial impact and it's, uh, provided to council for information purposes. It will affect those township severances for surplus farm dwellings specifically. Um, when people apply, right now they only have to dedicate over whatever land is in front of the severed parcel. Now it will be whatever frontage, front some county land, they'll have to do the road widening dedication for the entire parcel.
Okay, so the recommendation there is resolve that council received the Middlesex County Road Widening Policies report as prepared by the C A O treasurer for information purposes. Councilor Clark and Deputy Herr Hendricks, all those in favor? Opposed and carried.
Uh, the next item number ten is one that was added this evening, was on your, on your council desk. In regards to council remuneration. Um, council members' remuneration is one-third tax exempt up until December thirty first, two thousand and eighteen. Um, upon passing a bylaw, council members were eligible to have the income reported on box fourteen of a T four reduced by one-third as the municipal officer's allowance. The March two thousand and seventeen federal budget eliminated this exemption for all municipal councils effective January first, two thousand and nineteen. Council members will now be required to report the full amount of remuneration as taxable income. With the elimination of the municipal officer's allowance, there are financial implications to the township as well as for each member of council. The township will lose the H S G rebate on the non-taxable portion, the allowance of council's remuneration, which is very small in the grand scheme of things, but it was an allow, uh, an H S T rebate that we received. As well, we will see an increase in the township contribution for C P P and E H T, as well as any possible increases in remuneration. Municipalities have been taking various approaches in managing the impact of the elimination of the allowance. At minimum, council has the following decision to be made. Option one will remain status quo, no adjustment for the loss of your one-third tax exemption. And option two will be an increase in salary to reach the same net pay. In addition, staff is recommending review of the council remuneration package. The last review was undertaken in two thousand and fifteen. Township staff have participated in various surveys from other municipalities. This information is being compiled for council's consideration at the first meeting in January. It's best practice for council to review their compensation from time to time to ensure that each member is being adequately compensated for the duties, responsibilities, and obligations as a member of council. For information purposes, attach the following copy of bylaw five of two thousand and fifteen, which sets the remuneration expenses for council, and a copy of the two thousand and eighteen approved council remuneration. Uh, there will be financial impacts, which will be presented in January. Um, in the interim, staff recommend that council members ultimately investigate and understand the potential impacts to their personal t- income tax situation. Uh, this is being provided for information and it will be also included on the first meeting agenda in two thousand and nineteen for council's review along with the report and what other municipalities have done to compensate for the loss of the one-third tax exemption.
Okay, so the recommendation there, or Councilor, Deputy Herr Hendricks?
Yeah, I have a, a question. Um, I don't know if it affected, uh, the deputy mayor and the mayor in previous councils, but we never had any deductions for C P P.
No, and that changes because there was a one-third tax free allowance, you didn't need to pay deductions on the C P P.
Okay, that this will bump us.
Because of the. Yes, you'll be at full requirement to pay C P P and even tax.
Okay.
Going forward.
Any other questions? Councilor Clark?
Uh, so the E H T, is that Employee Health Tax?
Yes.
Is that what that stands for? Okay, and, um, could you explain, I'm, I'm, maybe I'm missing something, what is the allowance, does it?
That was the one-third exemption, so if you, the one-third allowance was the, uh, amount you did not need to claim on your T four.
Okay, that was what that was. Tax free portion. Okay, so there will be, there'll be no allowance going forward, it's straight.
Correct.
Okay, just to understand what the legal is.
So what your remuneration is, is what will be on your T four at the end of the year.
Okay, any other questions at all? So, resolve that council accepts the council remuneration report as provided by the C A O treasurer and that the council remuneration be included on the agenda for the first meeting in two thousand and nineteen. Uh, Deputy Herr Hendricks and Councilor McKinnon, all of the favor? Opposed and carried.
Report number eleven was also on your desk this evening and added to the agenda. It is an invoice payment approval for December seventh, two thousand and eighteen to December tenth, two thousand and eighteen in the amount of forty thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars. This is a list supplemental to the list that was already circulated with your agenda. And these invoices, although not a, a huge amount, are significant and we'd just like to put as many before council before we send the checks out as opposed to afterwards. Um, they're pretty, most of them are pretty straightforward, I know the public works ones, there might be a couple of questions in that department, but, um, they're pretty self-explanatory.
Is there any questions on the council, Councilor McKinnon?
Under the last page, page five, uh, the truck shop Strathroyd, MAC one, seven thousand dollars.
Uh, MAC one, that was for their annual safety. Uh, and, uh, our trucks, when they do go in for their annual safety, they go over for their winter, the winter, they, they check for everything. And so that was, uh, um, kind of a once overall for the year overhaul of the trucks, so, um, there was nothing, uh, extremely major. There was a lot of minor stuff, there was a bit of brake work, um, you know, stuff like electrical, there was a couple of hydraulic lines, that sort of thing, it was never one item, one big item, so.
Thank you.
Councilor Clark?
Uh, the Napier well installation, is that all done and everything's working fine?
Yes, yeah, deputy mayor, uh, the well is working, uh, is all done, completed.
The job, right?
Uh, came in, um, Laskey's came in on, on their quote, um, as well. And may, is the decommission, the decommissioning is also done. Um, and so well's been cleaned up, we still have a bit of tidying up to do in the, in the spring. Uh, and again, Laskey's quote came in, uh, right there, um, so, and everything now is running properly.
Thank you.
So there's no other questions, we resolve that council approved the account listing for the period December seventh to December tenth, two thousand and eighteen in the amount of forty thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents is presented. Deputy Herr Hendricks and Councilor Brody, all those in favor? Opposed and carried.
I just have a couple of, um, uh, information pieces for council, I, I know I don't have these on my report, but we received the notice for the biz after biz, which is being held on Thursday, December the thirteenth in Strathroyd from five thirty to seven thirty. You do need to contact Kathy Minus at the, um, Chamber of Commerce and, uh, arrange for a ticket, it is free, but you do need to have a ticket to get in. So that's on your desk for this evening. Um, just to let council know that, uh, the township office will close at four P M on Friday, December the twenty-first and reopen on Monday, December thirty-first at nine A M. Will also be closed January first and then regular hours after that. So that's been posted on our website and on our Facebook page.
Nice question.
Councilor Clark?
Um, so for your hours of operation, how are those days, um, treated like you're closed on the twenty-fourth and that's a normal business day? So is that deemed to be a holiday by the staff? Or how's that treated?
Not really, no, it's just been, um, we generally have a half a day closure the day before Christmas and the day before New Year's. Um, because there's going to be, well, I'm anticipating that there may be people wanting to come in and pay taxes. We do have people wanting to be here on the thirty-first, so we've traded a full day on the twenty-fourth for the half a day on the thirty-first. Generally, the, the township office in the past has been closed right through till January second. So, we're trying to be a little bit more, um, user friendly in here for people when they need to come in.
Council McKinnon?
And is it still applicable that staff are taking, like for the twenty-seventh and the twenty-eighth, uh, they would be taking a holiday, uh, from their schedules?
No, council denied, did not make staff take those days off, that's why we're shortening the number of days that were closed.
Okay, I was thinking they took, um, those days in lieu of, of a vacation day.
No, we had tried to implement that and, um, with the pushback from staff, it did not get implemented.
Oh.
So, council of the day did not require it to be a holiday, a vacation day.
Yeah, I was thinking we did, but my memory's bad, so.
And their own departments always are involved that time, yeah, the snows were here, were.
Yeah, i- if you required them to take a vacation day, what would happen is if they got called in and they were taking a vacation day, do they get time and a half or do they get just regular time? So we got into a little bit of a, a discussion on that, so it was decided that we're going, just going to move forward and just try to eliminate the number of days that were closed during the holidays.
I'm assuming if council would like, at a future time, we can discuss that in a closed session regarding.
Well, just, I, I could go on here, but it needs to be on camera, so I can.
They're, they're.
Yes.
Yes, again, uh, yeah.
Down.
If I may, um, one of the things that will be coming up in early twenty nineteen will be, uh, review of the wage and salary grid as well as several payroll policies that council will need to discuss, so that will be coming in the, in the new year.
Yeah, that would be hours of.
Um, as well in the new year, now that we've set the dates, we will be having the municipal insurance provider attending to provide council with an overview of the township insurance policy as well as what, um, councils are covered for. The, um, employee benefits carrier will be asked to attend as well, we'll arrange for them to be here so the council can get an update on what, um, staff is provided for in their benefits. We are also going to invite the Ontario Provincial Police to attend to go over their overview of their, uh, policing, what they do for the township and any concerns that the council would like to address to the O P P. Uh, Saint Clair Region Conservation Authority and the Sabal Bayfield Conservation Authority representatives have not been in attendance for quite a few years, so we'll invite, um, Mr. Harvey and we'll have, um, Saint Clair attend and maybe I can, um, bring up some information on those ones. Uh, County Planning is also preparing, uh, Count, uh, Planning one oh one, short overview of what the planning department does for the township and what their plans are going forward for us. They will be attending, uh, whatever planning meeting we have in January, which would likely be on the twenty-first. So we'll expect a, a report from the County Planning Department, and that will be Planner Erin Bash and, uh, Director of Planning, uh, Dirk Vanderwerf in, in attendance. As well, um, the County I T Department, we'll have your iPads, they're ready, they just haven't got them all deployed yet. They didn't have enough staff to get everybody out to all the council meetings that are happening around the county. So they will come early on one of the two meetings in January, um, since we're going to be here at, on the ninth. We should be able to have them come in hopefully that afternoon, so if everybody can come early. They will give an overview of the County I T Department, the services they provide to us, as well as get everybody's iPads up and running and provide a quick, um, review of what your iPad, what agenda does for you and what, um, what you need to know to operate it.
That's good.
So those will all be arranged for in early January into February, so.
So the O P P as well in January?
The O P, hopefully, uh, in January, I can't promise they will be able to make one of those meetings, but we'll, hopefully before we set our budget and, um, I know there's some discussion on, um, hosting a few evenings where we might be able to get some, some, um, public inter- introduction, introductions and just to get some public exchange to find out what people are concerned about with the O P P. So we're looking at, at getting something set up, um, through Mayor Smith, he may have some comments that. So people are concerned about what's going on out there, so maybe some, um, some informations like, uh, lock and lose it programs, um, you know, what to do when you live in, in the country, what to expect, uh, how to report things, those kind of details, so. Um, hopefully have them in, have a discussion with them and then get a, a, moving forward with the, some, right here, interaction with the O P P.
Councilor Clark?
Um, I'm thinking it'd be nice to have the O P P before the January twenty-second opt-in or opt-out vote, just for some extra input. It'd be nice to, to have some feedback from them.
I'll try to get them here by then.
Is anything else?
Uh, and just the, the score, the, um, southwestern.
South central, monetary.
South central Ontario, regional, I don't know.
Regional economic, something like that.
Economic development, yeah. Um, yeah, they, they will be, um, they have just sent out today their annual report, so we can invite them to come and present to council as well, that, uh, we do, um, involve with score through our county levy and they'd just like to come and tell everybody what they've done so far. And the last thing is on your desk tonight was, uh, proof for your business cards. Uh, there are some adjustments that we, I would like to see. I don't think it's very clear with all the extra numbers on there. So if everybody just wants to have a look at it, if any number is incorrect, let us know. Um, otherwise we'll move forward with getting them printed without the township numbers. We might relocate those under the township, uh, address, so. If you have any feedback on those, just let us know. And that's it.
Yeah, just jumping back with, uh, one thing that Kathy was saying with score. Middlesex County still has to decide if we're going forward with the membership of score, so that'll be interesting when they come. And depending on if the county opts in or out of the program. We have all those motions done. So other business, does anybody have anything for other business? Okay, I'll just say that the, uh, Middlesex County, uh, Council of Marlborough is just coming Thursday and I'm letting my name stand for Warden, so if anybody is able to attend, that'd be great to see your bases out there in the gallery.
I wish you well, but I'm, I'll be out of province, so I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay. And I just real- this is the last meeting, uh, the last meeting of the end of the year, so also, um, you know, be safe out there in the holiday season, so, you know, Christmas is upon us and weather is crazy, but we know that the, uh, winter maintenance is key, so that's, that's perfect, so.
I do have to say, in the winter, I'd much sooner take our township roads than the county roads. The Kerwood Road last week was just a nightmare. It was good to hear.
I'll take that back to Kristin.
Yeah, I think you can. After last winter, I think that can, it, it, whatever they put on the roads did not help the slipperiness.
All righty, so we need, uh, we have two bylaws in front of us and it's resolved that all three readings be given to bylaw, uh, number sixty-three, two thousand and eighteen, the Local Authority Services Agreement, and bylaw number sixty-four, two thousand and eighteen, confirm council proceedings and if the bylaws were signed with the mayor and clerk in the court, it's going to be attached. Remover and seconder for those. Council McKinnon and Councilor Brody, is there any questions on the, yeah?
Sorry.
Yeah, Councilor Clark and then Council McKinnon.
Okay, so, um, the schedule one states that there's an annual subscription fee of two hundred and fifty dollars plus HST. So is, are there extra costs on top of that?
No, that's all for the program operated. That's all in. Um, what it is is in two thousand and nineteen, we're going to be required to do a new energy management program. Uh, we've been recording our energy management consumption, but, uh, this program provides us with the exact allowance we need to do to be able to provide it to the ministry in proper format.
Because it's being mandated by the ministry, isn't it?
Yes, yes. Every five years we're required to, um, update our plan and every year we're required to report our consumption. So, um, we are getting, we, we have a program now since middle of November and we did a chart list for two thousand and eighteen, so we can get in there and get using it and, and get some data built in, so. Um, we're basically, you know, year by year, so if it doesn't work out for our purposes in two thousand and nineteen, we don't have to renew it for two thousand and twenty, but, um, we felt that it was a good start, so that we're getting the data that we need correctly in, in progress, so.
Is that your question or?
That, pardon my question. The other part is, will this online, uh, tool be utilized in any other way, like for requests for proposals, uh, for gas lines, say?
No, it's only for, for any features.
Trusted energy, yes.
Okay.
So, uh, that's, uh, I'm happy.
Okay, is there any other questions at all? No, all those in favor, oppose and that's carried. And that, a motion to resolve the meeting will be adjourned at nine sixteen, if you can.
Do you want to go to the other five minutes?
No, that's only the other same one. Yeah, we could go on the bylaws.
Oh, I'll, I'll still.
Yeah. All right, uh, Councilor Brody and Deputy Mayor Hendricks, all those in favor, oppose and carry.
That's how you replace Carol.
Yeah, um, just to let council know, um, we have a room in our West Street provided by Negro this evening, um, to celebrate this evening. Although council had an approved area, we were just planning that, um, approval would be given for the, the, uh, authorities who be signing for our township, so they did provide a.
We don't have to.
For this evening. It's just a service that they offer. They come right to us to, to have it signed right in front of them without having to have anything dropped in the, the financial.
It is on Carol's way home.
It is on Carol's way home, so we came to the end of that as well.